All right, well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this public meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. The board is an elected unpaid group of ten citizens who set policy and make decisions on educational, financial, and personnel matters for the Princeton Public Schools on behalf of all residents. We are always pleased when members of the community attend our meetings. The board and the school district operate under applicable New Jersey laws and under regulations of the New Jersey State Board of Education. Each meeting includes an opportunity for those attending to comment on items on the published agenda or other matters of interest to them. The board reserves the right to limit the time allotted to public participation. Law limits discussion of individual personnel and confidential matters. We want our meetings uh to be to provide useful opportunities for communication between the board and the community. Thank you for attending.
As required on the Public Meeting Act NJSA ten four six, adequate notice was given for calling this meeting. It was authorized by the Board of Education and forwarded to the municipal clerk Princeton packet and the times on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-three was distributed to the schools and others on the standard distribution list. The board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. Board Policy twenty-two thirty recording devices requires that we inform those attending uh this virtual meeting that the proceeds are proceedings are being recorded. This meeting is not being live streamed. Public members who wish to make comments at the appropriate time, as noted in the agenda out of by the presenting officer, officer shall be asked to uh click the mute button when called upon. Representative sending district is authorized to vote on such matters that affect sending district students or affect the governance of the Princeton Public Schools. As more specifically designated in NJSA eighteen eight thirty-eight eight point one. In the event this statute is amended, the law shall take precedence over this bylaw. Sending district votes pertaining to personnel actions refer to high school, central administrative, and district-wide staff only votes otherwise are considered abstentions.
Mr. Bolden, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Daphne Kendall.
Here.
Betsy Bagwell.
Here.
Beth Baron.
Here.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Here.
Jean Durbin.
Present.
Mark Franceschi.
Here.
Brian McDonald.
Present.
Susan Cantor.
Here.
Rob Christopher.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, that's great. Um, I'm moving on to item D one adoption of the minutes uh for January twenty-fourth. Can I get a motion, please? Brian second Mara.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
That's a Bagwell.
Yes.
That Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mark Franceschi.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Rob Christopher.
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Okay, uh can I get a motion for item D two adoption of the minutes for February seventh, twenty twenty-three? Uh Jean, second. Rob.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
That's a Bagwell.
Yes.
That Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mark Franceschi.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yeah.
Rob Christopher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bolden. Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to um our February Board of Education meeting. Um and before we begin, I just wanted to take a moment uh to talk about um some exciting wins for our students and our student athletes. Uh, we want to first recognize and congratulate congratulate the following PHS National Merit Scholarship finalists. Armon Ahmed, Christopher Bo, uh Perrin Change, Rohan Chavat, Jonathan Gu, Jukon Swan, Ethan Lee, Han Lee, um James Lee, Michelle Peng, Sophia Song, Connor Stewart, Luke Tong, Matthew Wu, and Allison Zhou. Congratulations to all of you who were named National Merit Scholarship finalists, and we wish you all the best as you continue your academic journey. And now I have breaking news. Uh, the Princeton High School Girl Swim Team won their meet today and in the state semifinals and they they beat Johnny High School, and they will be swimming on Saturday for the state championships for the first time in thirty years. Good luck to the swimmers and coaches. Um. All right, so you know, we have a lot of great athletes. I'll just say the boys hockey uh team uh are the Mercer County Champions as are um the boy's swimming team. The boys hockey team is moving on to the first round of the NJ SIA tournament. Um. Uh, the PHS wrestling team um was at the regionals and I'll just call out uh Cole Rose, Blaze Meal, Marty Brophy, Christian Paul, Chase Homerschlag. Um. Let me see, um, I think Ava Rose, um, and uh the PSH, they had an impressive eighteen and six season and um congratulations to the coach and all uh the wrestlers. And then finally, the PH girls uh basketball team, they were the Mercer County Invitational Champions. Um. So uh congratulations uh to them and all the players. Okay, with, I'm glad to have so much to congratulate our students for as we start the meeting. Um, so now we're gonna move on to item uh two in the president's report, which is students' perspectives, and I'm going to introduce uh Ms. D Sebastian, who is the seven, the eighth grade counselor in at uh the middle school, and I will let you take it away, please.
Yeah, hi. Hi, I'm the eighth grade counselor, yes, and I'm also the advisor to the Student Advocacy Club, which is an anti-violence, student-led, anti-violence, anti-bullying club. Um, a few of my students took the initiative to advocate for gender-neutral changing rooms um at Princeton Middle School, and they researched in their own time and created a presentation. One of my students is having some technical issues with their laptop, so I think we are still prepared to go. Uh, Indy Julia, you think you're good?
If you want, we could, we could delay it. Do you want us, do you want us to go to something else and then try to come back?
Indy, what do you think? Um, I can't hear you, Indy. So yes, maybe.
Yeah, why don't we come back?
Okay, okay.
Because we always like to hear from students and we want to be able to hear them.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, so we're gonna move on now to um item F one, which is an addendum to the collective negotiations agreement uh with Pressa. Um. Is this a consent item or an action item? Mr. Bolden.
Action.
Action, great. Can I get a motion? Betsy, second Mara, and I just want to say before we discuss on the agenda for board approval tonight as an addendum to the contract with the Administrative Support Staff Union Pressa. This agenda increases the starting salaries of the instructional aides, custodians, and some secretaries. This is an investment in our people. While we are not a business, school districts face some of the same challenges that businesses encounter. With rising inflation, we have had difficulty hiring for some positions that we did not have difficulty in the past. Uh, the board on went to the union and asked uh to increase the starting salaries um of this instructional aides, custodians, and secretaries, and the union agreed to that, and we also ended up extending the contract for another year. This will allow us to be competitive with other school districts in the area in hiring and keeping qualified staff to work with our students. Um, in recent years, the board has been proactive with managing labor relations with our three labor unions, whose membership has been a priority, uh whose membership comprised almost all the eight hundred employees of the district. It's been a priority of the board, and I just want to thank the board um for their dedication um to the staff um and investment in our people. All right, so now we have a motion, Mr. Bolden.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
That's a Bagwell.
Yes.
Beth Baron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mar Franceschi.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Rob Christopher.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. And we have two special guests tonight. We have Ashante Thompson uh and Eric Harch, um who are the co-presidents of the Union Pressa, and I don't know if you uh we want to thank you. Um, Michelle Tuck Ponder is not here tonight, but she was my partner in the negotiations. We want to thank you for your uh professionalism and uh willingness to do what we had to do um for the best interest of kids. Um, so I don't know if you wanted to say something, Ashante or Eric, but we're glad that you joined us tonight. No, nothing?
No, I'll say something. I'll just say um, thank, thank you for um always trusting that. Um, we will always be professional and thank you to the board for recognizing the importance of Pressa um within each and every one of our buildings. So we just appreciate working together with you um and always look to do what's best for the students.
Thank you, Ashante. My only sadness is that we extended the contract a year, and that'll be another year that I don't get to sit with you and talk.
That is always a joy.
And Eric, any, you're not one without words. Come on.
Yeah, no, I'd just like to echo what Ashante said. We do appreciate the support from the board and the administration, and we look forward to moving the district forward and, you know, always providing a professional attitude towards the students and the staff and the guests.
Yeah, I mean, we're very grateful for what your union members do for our kids, so thank you. We appreciate it. All right, um, Miss D Sebastian, are we good with our audio or do we need some more time?
Um, we went backwards. One of the students got all blurry and disappeared. Uh, Indy, can you hear it? Can we hear you now?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yeah, now.
All right.
All right, yeah, it looks like one of my students uh got kicked out. They're trying to get back in.
Oh, and I just, while while we're waiting, Dr. Kelly reminded me that Princeton Middle School finished uh, is it girls or boys, Dr. Kelly?
Boys.
Boys, boys finished the season with the best record. For the first time in school history, the team made it to the middle school Mercer County Basketball Tournament Finals. So well done, boys. And thank you, Dr. Kelly, for correcting that oversight. All right, Miss uh D Sebastian. I don't want me to sing. All right.
Indy, do you want to start it? You did really well this afternoon.
All right.
Okay, and hopefully the other two will be able to get back in.
Yeah, okay, Jules has just informed me that their Zoom is restarting.
Okay, yeah, all three of them seem to be having a little trouble. I see uh Indy's keeps getting blurry as well. Go ahead, do your best.
All right.
Do we want to put up the PowerPoint, Miss um D Sebastian?
Yes, please. Oh, yeah.
I have it here.
Okay, great.
Okay, so this is our plan for uh gender-neutral locker room. Uh, just Jules, Carmella, Cass, Alex, uh also help make this presentation, and Cass and Jules are supposed to be here.
Oh, Jules is back in.
Oh, he's back in, great.
Hi, I'm, I just joined on this phone because my computer just kind of gave up on me, so.
Okay, so here are some statistics about why we should have uh gender-neutral locker rooms. So transgender and non-binary teenagers face a greater risk of sexual assault in schools that prevent them from using bathrooms or locker rooms consistent with their gender identity. And uh here's a quote, the sources are at the end of the slides, by the way. Uh LGBTQ plus students most commonly avoided school bathrooms, locker rooms, and physical education or gym classes with approximately four in ten students avoiding each of these spaces because they felt unsafe or uncomfortable. Uh, among transgender and non-binary students, those in schools with a transgender slash non-binary student policy or guidelines, they are less likely to be prevented from using bathrooms aligned with their gender, uh less likely prevented from using locker rooms aligned with their gender. And some more statistics are that seventy percent of transgender students say they've avoided school bathrooms because they felt unsafe or uncomfortable. Sixty percent of transgender students uh were forced into the bathroom or locker room that did not match their gender every day. For transgender and non-binary students, the the twelve-month prevalence of sexual assault was twenty-five point nine percent, which is much higher than a national rate of fifteen percent for cisgender girls in high school and four percent for cisgender high school boys.
Okay, back on my computer. Um, so we did a few interviews with students um inside of PMS and um so some questions that we asked here. Um, so I asked that, how do you think a gender-neutral locker room could benefit students at PMS? And um, an anonymous student said that um, I think this school prides itself on being accepting and inclusive uh of all types of students, and a lot of students don't feel comfortable changing in the two gender locker rooms provided by the school. Um, yes, there is an option to go wa- um walk to the A wing, which is somewhat close, and change into gender-neutral bathroom, but um it's small, it's one stall, and you're gonna be walking down the hallways with um with just a swimsuit on, so it's not really the ideal thing. So um, yeah, they said that it would be, they think that it was the important step in the right direction to make students feel more comfortable in general. And um, they they said that they identify as gender queer and it will make um them feel more comfortable being in the school and make them feel more welcome.
So uh this was an interview that casted with, again, an anonymous student. So same question, how do you think a gender-neutral locker room could benefit students at PMS? And the answer was, uh, I think that all students should have the same facilities and the right to take a shower and the gender-neutral bathrooms, uh, which is where a lot of gender non-conforming people change, don't have that. Also, there is a chance that when you go change, someone will be using the bathroom, which is especially uncomfortable if you're wet and drippy and cold in your bathing suit, and it's uncomfortable to be in your bathing suit in the hallways, even if you don't have to wait outside the bathroom. And then how does this affect, uh, how do, how do you feel this issue affects you personally? Uh, as someone who uses the gender-neutral bathrooms, both as bathrooms and changing rooms, and as someone who's not binary, I feel like everyone will benefit from it. It's uncomfortable to be in the hallways in just your bathing suit, and if you need to change and someone is using the bathroom, or if you are using the bathroom and someone needs to change, that is a very awkward moment. And something else that the student cast interviewed included was that once they were just like using the bathroom, not as a changing room, and uh they got out, and there was another student who had been waiting in the hallway for a while because all of the gender-neutral bathrooms had been taken, and they were like really cold.
So we also did a video interview. Um, so this is me.
Oh, I think you have to unmute yourself because we're not hearing it.
Uh, I should be muted, but I don't know if the sound is working on the video.
Uh, did you, are you sharing your um computer sound? It's in.
I'll, I'll try and find that. Okay, it should work now.
This is Julia Savinsky and Sarah Chander. Um, and I'm here to interview you about the idea of a gender-neutral re- uh locker room here at PMS. So how do you think a gender-neutral locker room could benefit students here at PMS?
I mean, it would definitely make people, including myself, feel a lot more comfortable doing swim team and just even swim class when it's required. And I think it would make students feel a lot more comfortable in their skin and their identity.
Hmm, how do you feel this i- issue affects you personally?
Well, as somebody who has um a gender dysphoria and is gender neutral, I feel like this would lessen my anxiety, and it would just make me a bit of a happier person during swim season.
Yeah, so how would it really make you feel more comfortable?
Um, I think that it would make me feel more comfortable because um I don't have to constantly be worried about, um, like about if other people are looking or like other things. I could just be comfortable like in my own skin and private.
I like that. Thank you for speaking with me, Sarah.
No problem.
So here is our plan. Um, we would like the current women's team room to be converted into a gender-neutral locker room. Uh, the layout would be five bathroom stalls and five showers, and we think it's a good idea to keep the men's team room for its original purpose, so the wholesome team can choose that room. Uh, we're thinking that we could possibly apply for a grant, perhaps under accessibility for the money to convert to convert this room into an accessible gender-neutral locker room for anyone. So uh there's a picture of the locker room, and we were thinking we only need one. Well, for one, because you don't, you wouldn't actually like need to. And also because since like currently it's um women's team room and men's team room, it would probably end up unnecessarily gendering them, which is exactly what we're trying to avoid. And then here are our sources. And that's it. Are there any questions?
Well, thank you very much. Um, we love to hear from students and we appreciate your um advocacy for for other students. And I guess my question is, have you spoken to um Mr. Burr about this and and what do you think the next steps are?
We, I did share this with Mr. Burr. He said he was, you know, in support. He was really proud of the students um and kind of advised us to take it to the next next step and uh bring it to the board.
I just want to thank you both as well, and and also Miss D Sebastian. Um, I so appreciate your advocacy and also your solutions-oriented, you're already thinking about grants, which I think might make you an ideal board member someday, or a wonderful business manager at a school district or superintendent. So we need people like you to continue to advocate for for all students, and you've done a great, great first step here, and we really appreciate, we really appreciate it.
Yes, I'm really proud of all of them in the initiative.
Yeah, thanks.
Deb. Yeah, I just want to thank you guys. I think it's it's really beautiful that you created all this and brought it to us and um and you know what? You did your facts, you did your research, and you really came with something. And also, I can tell how passionate you are, and I'm excited for the board to kind of take it on the next step and see how, you know, we can work on this, but um really, really thank you for bringing it to our attention. I I think that's the key thing because I'm not in the middle school, so I don't know that that's not there, and we need that. So I really want to thank you guys. So, and I would suggest, um, so uh Mr. McDonald, oh, Mr. McDonald, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask for clarification from the board perspective and the administrative perspective, what the um next appropriate steps would be to pursue this um compelling uh concept.
So I was gonna suggest, and Mr. Bolden, please chime in. Um, I was gonna suggest that they reach out to you, Mr. McDonald and Mrs. Cantor, as co-chairs of the Operations Committee. And I'm not sure, um, because of the USA Swimming Rules that you can have. I'm not sure how the USA Swimming Rules works. I'm not sure if you could convert a locker room. Um, but um Mr. McDonald and Mrs. Cantor will definitely help guide you, um, Jules and Indy, uh, and Misty Sebastian, as to what if there is a location at the middle school that we could uh convert into a gender or mutual locker room. What do you, what do you think of that, Mr. Bolden?
I think it makes sense. I uh, Mr. Burr had talked about uh some possibilities before relating to uh team room that might be uh renovated. There are some definite uh ways we can uh work this through.
So we can add it to our operations agenda and uh look forward to getting back to you and and we might have some further questions to follow up with you guys, but we appreciate you coming to us as the first step.
And I'm sorry, can we get the names again of who um we all should follow up with?
Uh, sure, um, Brian McDonald.
Thank you.
Uh, Susan Cantor.
Okay.
But I guarantee you, they will be reaching out to you.
Okay.
And the operations committee meetings are eight o'clock in the morning, right? So Indy and Jules, you could probably uh join for a little bit, um, maybe get a late pass.
Yeah, yeah, we can.
Okay, um. And they'll be in touch, and then we could go from there, but it's something, you know, the board supports. Um, you know, we want all kids. It's awkward enough to be in middle school in a bathing suit, but it's even worse if you're standing in the hallway. Um, we want to do whatever we can to help people feel more comfortable, help students feel more comfortable in the building. Jean.
Thanks. Yeah, I too wanted to thank you for the presentation, and since I have you here, I was hoping I could ask a question just about gender-neutral bathrooms in the middle school and if there are enough of them. If there's ever a line for them, how they're used, you know, uh, I wondered if you could share a little detail there, because I too am not in the middle school.
Uh, yeah, sure. So I think there's three. They're pretty spread out around the school. And for the most part, they're fine. It's just that like, once somebody is using the one closest to your class, you either have to go into a gendered bathroom or oh, walk all the way to the other side of the school. And also, like, I think this is generally applies to all middle school bathrooms. They're not incredibly clean.
Oh, that's another issue for Mr. McDonald and Mrs. Cantor and Miss Bolden, Mr. Bolden.
Yeah, I mean, like, I feel that um often that if you wait, like, after um if you're waiting outside because someone's in there, it's kind of like awkward if someone knocks and you have to be like in here, or you know, I feel like there could be like a few more because in like, in se- some parts of the school, uh, there's just female and male, and you have to like walk all the way or wait, and teachers don't want you to walk all the way because they don't want you with missing that much class, but then they also are mad at you when you come back, and it took you like seven minutes to go to the bathroom because you're waiting for another person inside of it.
Good point.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? No, well, we'll, we'll definitely, you'll be hearing from us, but if it's not timely enough, please don't hesitate to reach out. And we really appreciate your letting us know of this concern and and we'll work with you to address it. So thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for allowing us the time and hearing us. I really appreciate it. Good job, guys.
Yeah, great job.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
All right, and with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Kelly for the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, everyone. Hi, everyone. I'm so sorry. I'm not uh feeling well all of a sudden this evening, so I have two items on the agenda. I am super excited. Uh, first, I'd like to, uh, is Dr. BJ there? I think so. I'm gonna invite Dr. BJ to just take the mic uh because we have some really important dates that we want to put on everyone's um uh radar. Dr. BJ.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for uh giving me this um opportunity to share uh with everyone the exciting ways that we are trying to build capacity for our spring assessment. Our um assessment teams in every building has worked really hard to make sure that everyone is ready to do their best and that we shift the culture in our community to support gaining information about where students are. And so, coming up um in March, March thirteenth, is the beginning of the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment, which is an eleventh grade requirement for high school graduation. Um, excuse me, this year we hope to increase the number of students that not only take the assessment, but especially in our most vulnerable populations, but their actual performance and success on that assessment. Working with Dana Karas and Adam Rothschild, we have begun, and Cecilia Birch, we have actually begun the process of preparing our school, uh aligning it with our technology demand. Thank you, Krista, and tech team, and getting ready for that. The second major string of testing that will happen this spring is the New Jersey uh uh student learning standards assessments, and those will be happening from May first through June second. Hmm, that feels like a long time, but it's spread out over several weeks, and so what I'd like to do, let me see if I can share my screen. Is point out a few really exciting updates that are happening to our school website. So you will notice, you will notice that this is where you can find information about NJSLA. And the messaging has been converted to both Spanish and uh is available so that everyone gets an opportunity to see where we are. So this access for English language learners is happening now. Our uh New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment is happening March thirteenth through seventeenth with makeups there. Our dynamic learning maps, April through May, and here's the big one for for the New Jersey student learning assessments that will happen across all grade levels, grades three through nine. Um, and we are really excited about it. So communicating that information. Here you can click and see the links. We want to encourage families to understand that testing is not really uh the problem, right? It's an opportunity for us to recognize our greatness and identify places where we need to revisit some challenges and open new doors. And so here is a just a vision statement for our district where we're using large-scale assessment and the technologies available to us to actually improve performance levels and identify growth areas for every child in our district. And so all of these resources are available, but we've also embedded links so that parents and caregivers can support their students at home by accessing things like practice tests. So that if, you know, a little Saturday chore in each of the language areas, uh, excuse me, each of the testing areas. uh, excuse me, each of the testing areas are available. And we want to just really change the way we think about assessment in our district so that we can ultimately um, gain precious insight into how we can build programs for youth all year round. Hi, Jean. Yes, question?
Hey there. Thank you for that. Um, love the links so we know where to go. I have a question about whether or not the tests are offered in Spanish.
Yes, they actually are. So we have um, Pearson, who is the service provider for the New Jersey Department of Education, makes assessments available in English and in Spanish.
And do kids just um, volunteer which one they want, or is it assigned in advance? How does that work?
Teachers and the the teachers that work most closely with families um, who speak other languages, in this case, Spanish, they have a full sort of scope of what their learning needs are. And so a teacher can actually, uh, and a counselor can make the request to have a student tested in Spanish, but that's uh, an accommodation that is most appropriate for ESL students typically. That we make, we, so we have a system now where we can actually assign students who need uh, Spanish transcribed text to a digital platform that will allow that.
Beth, I see Beth's hand.
Yeah, thank you so much. I just really appreciate this um, idea of kind of an over thinking about it from a larger perspective and why we're doing the testing. And I, you know, we've been asking, I think I asked for this like five years ago, that we would just say to parents, here's what we do. Here's the overall picture of what your child is going to be um, tested on, and here's why. Um, I hope that you might also indicate in there, some of those are mandatory by the state, so we don't really have a choice. As a district, we've got to test them, and I think some parents are always thinking, well, we do too much. But actually, I think we're we're really mandated to do most of it, so it's helpful, I think, to indicate this is a state required testing. And I think that there's some other testing that we then use as a diagnostic. So I appreciate the um, the transparency and the information on the website, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's it's one, one important thing that we are trying to do. Um, and to mitigate what we think is an increase in test anxiety and fear around testing. And if we, you know, I think of it in the same way that I think about discipline. Discipline um, can be a good thing if it's going to cause you to do something different. And for me, for example, my new discipline this year is to exercise every day.
Hmm.
So it's it's a way of punishing my flesh while at the same time rewarding my entire body. I suspect in in a very similar way, gaining insight into what I actually know may feel at first like a punishment. However, because we do everything digitally now, we have the ability to have results in much faster, in real time, that would allow us to sort of say, oh, okay, I need to do this thing differently. And so as we get more efficient at communicating those results, then I think it'll, it'll take care of itself, and more people will recognize their value.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I want to thank Dr. Joy. If okay, I will go to the next item on the superintendent's report. Uh, if I can share my screen. I am really pleased to present to the board and also the uh, community uh, this evening, our new uh, strategic plan um, for the board's consideration and hopefully your approval. By clarifying the goals and measures of student achievement and by outlining a roadmap for establishing annual priorities and action plans, our strategic plan will focus on the district's promise of delivering high quality education for all of our students, enhancing their plans post-high school graduation, increasing student academic achievement, and building equitable learning experiences. The plan, if you recall, was developed by embracing diverse voices within our community. Uh, it took a little bit longer uh, than perhaps the traditional um, process to uh, do a strategic plan. Uh, we began almost, if you think about it, a year ago uh, with collecting uh, information via survey. And we continued our meetings through almost the beginning of February of twenty twenty-three. The plan was developed by uh, diverse uh, team members. And I would like to thank every member of each team, whether it was students who met in focus groups or students who uh, took a survey. If you were a member of our core planning team, our instructional focus team, um, our uh, supervisors and school leaders, our alignment teams, uh, the board. I especially would like to thank, because they sat through many a meetings. Um, and we also conducted community forums, so all of the community members, our families, our students that came out and provided input during those forum forums, and obviously, our cabinet team provided input as well. Uh, these teams and individuals uh, engage in a data-driven equity-focused planning process. And the ultimate product or result is the final draft that is posted and the agenda, item G two. Um, and I am coming to the board this evening for approval. It is on our consent agenda. You will see as you go through the the uh, highlighted recommendations in the plan, that at the center of our strategic plan would be everything that we plan to do for student learning that is inclusive of our promise, our portrait of a graduate, our universal goals and measures of student success, and our performance, or we like to call them our excellent targets. You will also see that this is an adaptive plan, and that basically means that at the start of each school year, every school, every department will prepare and present to the board for approval an annual action plan outlining our priorities and performance indicators for the year, which we then, using an adaptive approach, plan to create a system, a disciplined system, uh, communicating and collaborating with our board, our educators, administrators, parents, and the community at large to present our progress as well as outline what we're learning and use that learning in a cyclical reative process of planning for the upcoming school year. So I'm not going to uh, go in depth with what's uh, all the goals. Uh, you can follow that uh, this evening, and I have shared a copy of the plan with the board. Um, if you are watching by way of the community, I would love to invite you to the February twenty-seventh State of the District as well as the um, highlight or launch of our strategic plan uh, at the high school, beginning at six PM and concluding at eight PM. But now I'd just like to pause for any questions that the board might have about the strategic plan.
Well, thank you, Dr. Kelly. I I think uh, we all, like you said, were involved in many, many meetings, and we appreciate uh, the collaborative approach um, that you had uh, throughout the process.
Thank you. That concludes my presentation for tonight.
Okay, um, thank you, Dr. Kelly. All right, now we will move on to item H one, the student board member report. And uh, with Andre and Rohan, and Rohan, when you emailed us and said um, that you had the basketball game go.
Uh, it was, we, we were, uh, but we lost by one.
Ah, I'm sorry to hear that, but I was gonna say, don't worry, you could go into overtime, and you're still gonna be back in time for the report.
No problem, yeah.
We have a long meeting tonight, but anyway, I'll turn it over to you and and Andre.
Uh, yeah, good evening, everyone. Just want to first thank you guys again for all your continued service at our school. We really appreciate it. Uh, we have a relatively short update for you guys on the mental health resources that we uh, talked about last meeting. Uh, we have begun spreading it on our stico social medias and personal um, so medias and to our peers through messaging, and we are working to continue its spread.
Yeah, and then also, just in terms of like what we updated from when we showed it to you guys, we um, added the name of the new um, services coordinator, who is like Ms. Parker. Um, we also added the um, suicide hotline number, which is nine eight, nine eight eight. Um, and um, yeah, that's basically the only changes we made to the um, to the uh, the resource after we showed it to you guys, yeah.
Um, yeah, and we're also working with the administration to introduce the resource to the bathrooms, always in the Shmuel's reel. And also a few counselors have actually reached out to us about uh, spreading it within the counseling department as well, so we're gonna pursue that as well.
Yep, and then also, we're still like, working on like brainstorming, like, what other initiatives we could do for students and for the school um, during the rest of the year, and we're excited to keep working with the board. Yeah, that's it.
That's it. Well, thank you for the update, and I just want to know, um, did you put those uh, stickers in the bathrooms? Or where where are they? Are they up yet?
This, um, that's what we want uh, to talk about, because we don't know the like, the logistics of like, who needs to be approved, uh, things to be put up in the bathrooms, because like, social media is easier. But that's what we're gonna talk to Shmuel before the next meeting to, uh, or some administration to get those out.
All right, well, Dr. Two can help too.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
Definitely send out an email.
Okay, that's great. Well, thank you so much. We really appreciate the update. And Rohan, you're late to the meeting, and you missed the congratulations on your um, National Merit um, Scholarship finalist, so.
Thank you.
Well done.
Much.
Student athlete. We're very proud of you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, oh, all right. Um, and with that, let me get back to um, we're gonna move on now to Mr. Bolden with um, discussion of the ACFR AMR and corrective action plan.
Thank you. So uh, tough act to follow after the uh, students and the other students earlier. So uh, real quickly, we are required to discuss the audit. We do have the auditors each year come out in operations. Uh, we do have new auditors this year, so we've made a change. It's been over a decade uh, with our, so uh, every year we have to have an annual external audit. Um, there are, of course, many audits that governments are subject to, uh, the state, um, various agencies, et cetera. But this is our annual uh, external annual comprehensive financial report audit. Um, they look at compliance issues, um, and they issue two reports, the hundred and sixty-nine page uh, ACFA, which was distributed to the board. Um, each year, the board has to um, accept both uh, reports. Uh, the second report is a smaller, more concise audit managers' uh, management report, which uh, goes over um, specific compliance requirements that our external auditors, Nisavachi and company, are required to opine on. Uh, there was uh, one uh, finding, uh, corrective action plan, we, um, asking the board to accept. Um, it is required, it is related to a uh, to um, each year, uh, basically, it was a kind of a newer take on it that uh, the new firm had versus our old firm that we are required to. So if we paid a teacher, like some of the larger uh, urban and rural districts, they get a lot of uh, Title One aid, uh, hired teachers. Um, and so if we pay staff directly out of that federal grant, we're required to uh, send in this form, and we're required to reimburse the state for the um, features pension and annuity fund and the social security payments. The state, as uh, some of the board knows, um, definitely the operations committee knows, pays for the every certi- uh, certified teacher and administrators' uh, pension contributions, not the individual's requirement, but the district's uh, payment of those pension and also social security funds. Uh, we didn't have any people that we were required to remit those funds to the state. However, uh, Nisavachi pointed out that it it is a requirement regardless if there are funds that are due uh, to the um, state. Essentially, it's viewed as double dipping. If the state uh, pays those funds on behalf of the teachers, if we get federal funds, then um, then we are required to remit that portion, which is a lot of money, uh, back to the state. Um, I also wanted to briefly go over the uh, financials, just trying to find the zooms always, and here we go. Nope, here we go, real quick. So the uh, operating results for uh, June thirty of two thousand twenty-two show uh, operating uh, excess of revenues over um, expenditures of uh, one point three five million. However, we did uh, expend a a lot of money on capital reserve projects um, uh, over uh, I think you, I was doing everything off the top of my head. Uh, we did a lot of HVAC, um, that, yeah, that's right, it was about seven hundred thousand dollars in HVAC uh, repairs. We also did about um, nine hundred thousand for the pool HVAC system, which was uh, I hear, a big improvement. Um, one of the things at the middle school, uh, prior to uh, me starting here was that you could smell chlorine in the hallways at the middle school, uh, that's dissipated. Um, so those uh, things, we did some roof work at the high school. So net, we've uh, expended down our fund balance, uh, about a million dollars, but most of that on needed capital improvements. Um, that's really the highlight of the two things. Uh, we're asking the board to uh, accept the audit report. It was distributed a couple of weeks ago. Um, and I'll take any questions uh, from uh, the board members relating to audits. Seeing none, uh, Brian.
Uh, not really a question. I I just, and Susan will say more about this later. Um, but we did receive a forty-five minute presentation from the auditors. Um, that was very thorough. Uh, we did ask questions. Um, and um, most of us have reviewed the two reports that Matt referenced. And um, while one of them is very long, um, it's also very good um, and has a lot of helpful information. And um, while I wouldn't sort of encourage you to do it right before you're going to bed, um, it it is, it is um, worth a read if you can find some time on, because it prevents, presents a very clear um, kind of look at the district's finances. And we're grateful um, to Matt and his team for all the work that they did to prepare for the audit.
Thank you. Are you inferring that it's uh, somewhat mild reading?
Uh, it's, I found it to be scintillating. I'm just not sure that others, others would feel the same way.
Got it. Any other questions?
Thank you so much, Matt, uh, really for a great job. One area we really um, leave in your good hands.
Thank you.
And I can tell you from first-hand experience, it doesn't smell like chlorine in the hallways, and it's much cooler upstairs.
And clearly, it's baking the kids much faster.
Oh, there you go. Yeah. There you go. All right, uh, so now we're gonna move on to item uh, J one, uh, public forum, uh, public comment on agenda items. I don't know, um, so I would just ask that, please just say, um, the street live on, uh, your name, and please uh, keep to three minutes or less. Mr. Bolden?
Jill North.
Yes, hi, my name is Jill North. I live on Sycamore Road, and I have two kids in the Princeton Public Schools. I have a comment about the strategic plan. Um, I'm concerned about how the district plans to achieve the goal of ninety percent participation in advanced classes, as it says in the current version of the strategic plan. I have a sixth grader who placed into a math class that is called pre-algebra accelerated this year. This class was created a few years ago out of what used to be two distinct levels of math instruction in sixth grade. In other words, it was created by detracking sixth grade mathematics, so that all sixth graders, except for the few who place into seventh grade math, are lumped together into one class that is called accelerated. In my own child's case, this has been a disaster. She spent the entire year sitting through class time entirely devoted to material she already knows. The only way she learns anything new, and I should say, this is through the heroic efforts of her wonderful teacher, is by means of extra credit worksheets. I think this is completely unacceptable, and yet it should be clear how detracking sixth grade math has furthered the goal of having more students in advanced classes simply by slapping an advanced label on a class that has no actual course time devoted to advanced material. On a class that has no actual course time devoted to advanced material. Increased representation in advanced classes is a worthy and important goal. But the way the district has been doing this so far is not working. And it also goes against the goal, something that's also stated in the current strategic plan of giving. Quote, every student access to challenging academic programs. My child has not had that access. I would like to ask the board and the administration to consider first of all reinstating different levels of math courses in sixth grade. And second, to rethink the goals of the strategic plan so that it is absolutely clear that increasing the number of students in advanced classes. Cannot be achieved simply by watering down courses and calling them advanced. From my own experience of the district's approach so far has been a case of exactly this. With my child receiving no new instruction in regular math class time for a whole year. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. We wanna just for a minute just comment on um our math um review. And I just, I would, I do wanna say, Jill, that those changes um at the middle school happened, I think in twenty eighteen and. And really, the goal um was to improve transitions. Um but Dr. Two, would you just comment on um, you know, we realize that um especially the middle school. The curriculum needs to be looked at, and so I'll let Dr. Two explain what the steps are.
Um so we um put out an RFP um twice. Um our first go around wasn't exactly what we were looking for because we had it bundled with science. That was back in December. And we put out a singular RFP um to look specifically at grades three through eight math, inclusive of computer science as well. Uh a small committee of um representative board members from SAC. And administrators looked at some of the proposals and then we have a full SAC team. As well as admin and district education educators are going to be interviewing two top finalists to conduct a math program evaluation. Uh depending on the successful finalists, um that would start happening April and May this year and go in probably into the the next school year. And one of the things that we are going to be looking at is course alignment and course sequencing at the middle school level. The other thing is if um if you are a middle school parent, we did um, I I think it went out today uh from the middle school and for rising sixth graders. We are going to have a math placement night uh that will be a webinar format uh so that people can attend from from home or or traveling or wherever it may be. And if they can't attend, it can be, it will be recorded and posted on our website and that will be Thursday, March twenty-third at seven P M. And that will be about our current programming um and just trying to be more transparent about timelines, about rubrics and about placement processes. At that middle school level.
Thank you, Dr. Two.
You're welcome.
Dr. Kelly?
I also um just wanted to say that the board, um Ms. North and those that are in the community are listening. Um have also supported the district in um making sure that we are attending to the needs of all of our students. So we um have recently received approval to hire another um staff member to help support. Um the Quest program, um and uh Dr. Two could speak about that a little bit um later. Uh in addition to that, I know that she will be leading uh several staff members and administrators. With visiting various districts um beginning in March, uh looking at um uh different programs. Where uh we are teaching mathematics by using a workshop approach. Uh again, making sure that we are attending to all of our students' needs, um so. You know, there's a lot more that we could share with you. Again, please come out on February twenty-seventh at the high school, six P M. Uh you'll get a chance to meet a lot of administrators as well as hear more of the things that are currently being done. As well as what um those administrators are looking forward to uh in light of our new strategic plan.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. You muted Mr. Bolden.
Lisa Jackna.
Hi, thank you, um I actually wanted to echo um the concerns of the first caller. When I looked through the final strategic plan, that was something that really stood out at me. Uh having ninety percent of our students in accelerated or advanced classes. Well, I think it's a, it's a beautiful goal. I think that the point of a strategic plan is to have realistic goals. I don't think ninety percent of our students want to or necessarily capable of being in advanced or accelerated classes. So if we set a percentage that's unrealistic, I think we're in like the seventy percentage range now or something. If we set a percentage that's unrealistic, are we going to then try to dumb things down later to meet, be able to meet those goals? That I I'm just very concerned of how we're gonna meet goals that are set that are that that really appear unrealistic. Um for example, I don't have it right in front of me, but I think. There was a a goal for a hundred percent of students to be college ready in ninth and tenth grade. Um how can a hundred percent of students ever do an anything? We we don't have a hundred percent of students showing up for school every day. I I just think having a goal of a hundred percent. While ideally, we would love that, isn't really realistic. Um so I guess my my final question is just, you know, as we have a plan to. Start sharing the strategic plan with the public on the twenty-seventh, in terms of some announcements at the meeting. Is there room for the board to have any questions on this plan? To be able to go back and change anything, or is it an automatic, we have to approve it tonight so we can start moving forward? I know it's been going on for a year. I've been involved in it. Um and I would love to see it final and move forward, but I wanna make sure that we don't finalize it. Unless everybody really agrees and feels that everything in there is how it should finally be. Thank you.
So at least I'll just say that, first of all, I think a strategic plan actually should be aspirational, um. Everything else is like perfunctory and 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 rote and, you know. Um but a strategic plan should be aspirational and we do aspire for, you know, um. All our kids to have the chance to succeed, and if you were following the meetings, which I know you were, you know that um. You know, the board um had some questions about proportionality and this and that, and so I'm not gonna speak for the board. I speak for myself. Uh we've all raised many questions, um we all live in this district, we all love this district, or all our kids went through the district. And uh we wanted to see the the district's um reputation for excellence continue, but we also. Um no, historically, we have not served all kids well, and um I think, you know, that's something that we want to do. Um. So uh uh thank you for sharing your concerns, um and I think the board vote will tell you um. How the board members feel about it. Mr. Bolden, do we have another talker?
Uh yes, Linda Doc.
Um yes, I've also participated in this process for um several months off and on. I appreciate all the work that went into it. Um. I think that a lot of members um of the board and um some of the new and longstanding members of the. Princeton Public Schools know that behind the scenes, I have also been advocating for more rigor. Uh beginning in kindergarten um and continuing on through high school. At the same time, I don't think that this is an either or issue. I think um. What I'd like to see, and you know, time will tell, uh is that more students are prepared for the most rigorous classes. I, you know, as a college professor, um have seen students who are underestimated, counted out. And really left behind flourish with the right resources and have performed um equally. Um um or much better than their peers and I have been a professor at Princeton. And CUNY and I have seen this happen time and time again, so I hope that. We will go into these debates about new curricula options for science, for math. I hope that we revisit social studies and English. There are great high-quality instructional materials out there that will help prepare students better. For some of the most rigorous classes in the school district. I really, really think this is a both and issue. And um I certainly don't think my son would be harmed. Um to 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 be in a class with more diverse students that is also rigorous. And I don't think that we should have any kind of advanced um judgments about. Who belongs in certain classes and who doesn't. I I think that if you are a doubter, uh these kids are gonna prove you wrong. Thanks.
Alright, thank you, and do we have anyone else? I'll just give it a second because I'm always proven wrong. No, we're good. Alright, we're gonna move on now. Uh item K one is harassment, intimidation, bullying. Is that action? That is an action item. Do we wanna vote on that now, Mr. Bolden? We do. Can I get a motion, please? Brian, second, Beth.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
F. Baglia.
Yes.
F. Barron.
Yes.
F. Ronco.
Yes.
Lynn Durbin.
Uh I'm I'm unclear what we're voting on. Are we voting on a block or are we voting on a single, a single issue?
No, we're voting on a block.
Um I think we need to separate it out.
It is. That's what we're doing now.
Is this the block?
Yes.
There will be something separate coming after. I'm sorry, I can't see it on the agenda, so I I don't know.
It's all the heads uh that are on.
That we discussed in closed session.
Yeah, and I wanted to abstain on one.
Uh, okay, I think you can just say the one that you want to abstain on. Is that right, Mr. Bolden?
I don't know what that is until we call it out, right?
We don't call it out, though.
Don't you, aren't they numbered?
Yes, and that would be on the report. That's an executive session. I believe it's eight. Or I don't know. Bati, do you know which one?
Um I'm I'm wondering, I think there were two questions. We had an executive session. One was on number eight and one was one from a different year.
Which ones did you want to abstain on, um Ms. Durbin?
The different year.
Got it. It will be marked that way.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden.
Yes, for the others.
Got it. Uh Mara Franceschi.
Yes.
Uh Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Ethan Cantor.
Yes.
Uh I'll vote similar to Jean. Uh I'll abstain on the one from uh previous year. And yes, to the others.
Will be marked that way.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. Alright, where are we now? Oh, Board Committee highlights, alright. And we were going to start uh with the long-term planning, Beth Barron and Brian McDonald. And I'll just preface it by saying, um we were gonna, we are, and I know you guys will mention it, but just in case you don't. Uh we're gonna have a more robust board discussion at a future meeting once we pick the date, but about the demographic enrollments. Go ahead.
I think I'll take it tonight, if that's okay with Beth. Um the full board received the updated demographic projections from our demographers at the firm SLAM, S L A M. On February seventh. This update can be viewed as part of the February seventh board meeting recording that is available on the board section of the district website. The committee has not met this month. We will hold an open committee meeting that's now confirmed on Tuesday, March twenty-first. At six P M to which we invite the full board and the public to discuss next steps in the facilities planning process. In support of the district's new strategic plan and informed by the updated demographic projections. We look forward to continued community partnership in providing appropriate teaching and learning spaces for. The years to come in a timely, cost-effective manner. And consistent with the board's approach to planning in recent years, we anticipate three things. First. Looking at solutions that do not require the modification or expansion of our schools. An example of this is the scheduling changes made at the middle school two years ago that significantly expanded capacity. Two, exploring solutions that maximize the use of existing space. An excellent example is the successful renovation of the old library at the middle school that created four new flexible classroom spaces. And three, if needed, we will investigate potential solutions that require some expansion of existing school facilities. An example of this is the four new classrooms at the high school that are part of a new second floor addition of an existing wing. We look forward to discussing these topics and others on uh the twenty-first of March at six P M. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Brian. Um next up is operations with Susan and Brian, co-chairs.
I am gonna take this one and as always, Brian, feel free to chime in. Um I will start by saying the committee met in closed session on February fourteenth. And is continuing that closed session meeting tomorrow morning at eight A M. Uh Matt, we might have one or two agenda items that need to be added based upon uh this meeting so far tonight. But our topics of our last meeting included um the the annual meeting with our auditors. Um and they presented a comprehensive, the annual financial comprehensive financial report and the orders manager. Meet report. Uh this was a very thorough presentation. There were no major findings and our business office. Was once again complimented for their professionalism and thoroughness and we also compliment them. Uh for those attributes as well. On the two thousand twenty-two referendum, we do have an update that is on tonight's agenda. The referendum, on the, on tonight's agenda, the administration has recommended that we reject the sole bid. That was received to replace the roofs and eight-track units at several of our schools. Uh for work that was to be done this coming summer. The bid was two million dollars over budget. We were told that can continuing log and lead times on HVAC equipment were problematic. These projects will rebid, be rebid no later than this fall and possibly sooner. Unfortunately, this means that most of the work will not be completed until the summer of twenty twenty-four rather than this coming summer. Matt and his team are trying to see if it is possible to get some of the smaller discreet projects done this coming summer. Including the siding and related work at some of the elementary schools and the nation re-repair at the high school. We then began discussion about major maintenance and small capital projects that may require attention sooner rather than later. And two potential funding sources, our major maintenance fund and a possible small future referendum. This discussion will continue tomorrow. We will also be discussing some of the parameters around the creation of the current budget that will be presented on March fourteenth. For preliminary board approval before submission to the county and the state for review. Final approval of that budget is scheduled for April twenty-fifth. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Can I ask a question? Uh you mentioned a possible uh future referendum. Can you like share what kind of items would be addressed in something like that?
A possibility, I mean, we were gonna discuss that on March three first because that's part of what we were looking at with Matt. But it could be security enhancements in our buildings, um it could be um changes to our space. Like cafeteria improvements at the high school to better um serve our students. It could be. Um an update of uh, you know, you know, the roofwork or things that are involved.
I guess.
This we're going through right now.
And this is something that you were planning prior to the demographic report.
Absolutely, these are, again, these are not change, these would not be things related to the demographic report. They related to either students that are currently exist in our schools to make their experience better. It would be for safety and security and it would be for maintenance, the continued focus that the district has on. Uh maintaining their built, our buildings. This, any discussions of changes based upon the demographic report. Are obviously a little further out if if we're gonna need to do any of those.
And I I I know one thing we've heard from our student um board reps is the wifi.
Tech is on that list.
And and just if, just so the community is aware of the cost, what what would it cost to upgrade our wifi at the or approximately?
That is. At least a half million dollars.
And is that just because of technology or is that because the building's so old and or is it a combination?
Upgraded the uh infrastructure, um you know, from one to ten gigs, so. Uh a lot of um switches need to be replaced.
Okay, alright.
But these are the type, these are exactly the types of things that um we've been looking at or the administration's been coming to us. Uh and we're looking at the timeframe so that we can best uh make these changes. And that discussion will continue and then be brought to the full board, obviously, um when the administration's ready.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much. Um moving on now to um personnel with Chair W. Bronfeld.
And Mara, yep.
And Mara, I'm sorry, Mara. It's still February.
The Personnel Committee met on Thursday, no, um February ninth. We discussed additional staff needs in the district. Dr. Two shared the twenty twenty-two.
Dr. Two shared the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three non-tenure review process with the committee. The committee was updated on the Riverside Elementary Principal Search. The committee was updated on the Assistant Superintendent of H R Search. The committee heard how the H R department is preparing for Q SAC and working on the comprehensive equity plan. The committee heard how codes of conduct for family handbook are being reviewed. The committee was informed about several job fairs that the district will be attending and setting up ourselves. They include T C N J, Ryder, C J Pride and Princeton's own job fair. And I personally want to thank Maria Hernandez, who is on our retirement list this ye- uh tonight. For all her help as I've been on personnel for several years, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Debbie. Moving on to policy with co-chairs Beth Barron and Jean Durbin.
Hi there, um we met on February tenth at eight eighteen. We're going to next meet on March seventeenth at eight fifteen in the morning. On February tenth, we reviewed again the Strauss ESMA Policy Alert two twenty-nine. This policies are on for second read uh tonight. And we talked about um the sustainability policy that will be um rolling out uh safe routes to school policy. A question of um free speech and expression in the schools. Came up and um a discussion about virtual meetings after the state of emergency is over. And whether or not uh you can vote if we are in a hybrid state. As a Board of Education member. You know, if we have a hybrid meeting and or you're calling in from a telephone, for example, are you able to vote? Uh once the state of emergency is over. Getting clarification on that. And we also talked about um some governance issues, um setting retreat dates in the board calendar so we can be better prepared for planning um each year. Thanks.
Thank you, Jean. Moving on, um. I'm sorry, it's I know it's student achievement, but I just want to make sure with co-chairs Betsy Bagle and Michelle Tuck-Ponder.
Great, thank you. We met on February third, we we now meet on Fridays at eleven thirty. Um on our public agenda, we um spoke about the Quest program that Dr. Kelly mentioned earlier. Our elementary supervisor, Sarah Moore, came to talk with us about plans to develop. A committee and lead work for the K five tier three enrichment program, also known as gifted and talented education. Here we're calling it Quest and we eagerly anticipate our new um our new staff member joining us to lead that program, which is very exciting. Um Dr. Joy Barnes Johnson came to talk about the Science Department vision and goals. Science programming and departmental goals, and she also told us about summer programming. And then something on the agenda for approval this evening is the Colmar Exchange in November of twenty twenty-three. That trip is back post-pandemic and Priscilla Russell came to share information about what that exchange will look like this year. Then we did adjourn into closed session, we meet again on Friday, March tenth at eleven thirty. It's on Zoom and the public is welcome to attend.
Thank you very much, Betsy. Any questions? No, all right, well, thank, thank you, everyone. I mean, it's amazing the amount of time and effort we all put into the to our board work, so. And it doesn't get, we don't get thanked enough, so thank you. Moving on now to item N one, policies for second reading. No, all right, I'm just gonna go now and uh I'm reading, so if you need, want to say something? Just say, hey, you, all right, N one resignations. And two retirements, I also wanna wish Maria Hernandez a a long and healthy retirement. We really enjoyed working with her. And three appointments and four transfer assignments and five leave of absence. And six personnel item and seven substitute teachers and eight athletic appointments. And nine student services and ten curriculum and instruction and eleven press of salary revisions. Now moving on to item uh oh one, student day field trips, oh two, student overnight trips. Oh three, grant application amendment. And oh four, uh student disciplinary item. Moving on to item uh P one, educational placement of pupils, uh P two, professional consulting services, Silvergate Prep. Q one, financial reports uh is an action item, can I get a motion, please? Uh Rob, second, Brian.
Daphne Kendall.
Abstain.
Betsy Bagle.
Yes.
Beth Barron.
Yes.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mara Franceschi.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Bob Christopher.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to item Q two, annual school district audit, annual Q three, annual school district audit. Management man- management report. Q four, fire and evacuation drills. Q five, uh registration and travel agenda. Q six, transportation agreement. Q seven, renewal of transportation contract. Q eight, joint transportation agreement. Q nine, rejection of bids. Q ten, purchase of various items from maintenance reserve. Q eleven, renewal of athletic transportation. All right, um and with that, we move on to our second um public comment. Do we have any takers, Mr. Bolden? All right, we have one, please just um. I've been very lax in not asking people to uh say the street um that they live on or the town and I get. Chastised a little bit, so please just say uh your name and the street you live on and the town you live in and please try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, my name is Anne Morell and I live on Nassau Street. And so I have a question, I'm the mother of two. The oldest one uh graduated from P H S almost two years ago. The other one is a sophomore um. And at P H S. And uh I have a question for the board um about something that has happened to us. So and I've been in touch with the school counselor and with Mrs. Banjan, uh sorry, with Dr. Ban Johnson about this and they've been very helpful. But still, I don't completely understand the process, so. Let me tell you what I know, so my son, who is now in college. Was able to do the following at the high school, he took BioExcel. In freshman year, then he took um ChemExcel as a sophomore and then he was able to enroll in A P Physics one. Uh as a junior. And um so my second son, who is now sophomore, wanted to do the same thing his brother did. But then we found out that it was not possible anymore. There had been a change in the program of studies and now to take A P Physics one, we first have to take Physics Excel. So I've been in touch, you know, Mrs. Dr. Ban Johnson was very helpful, you know, this looks like there are ways out of this. Maybe we can, you know, you can test and anyway, there seems to be, you know, ways out of this, but I I've just been wondering about the reason for this change. And also, uh how do we keep informed of those changes? Because you know, those, this took us quite blindsided. And so if there is a place where we can go and know what's going on and what's going to happen in next year or two, that would be helpful. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So the course of study changes um every year and I think, I I don't know, Dr. Two, I don't know if you know if there have been changes and. I mean, A P Physics as a junior.
So um this, we talked about this at SAC um this month. So I know that Dr. Barnes Johnson talked to rising eighth graders and so what I'm going to um. Ask her to do is to provide a blurb for the board update for those who are not a part of the um SAC committee sort of explaining it.
Yeah, sorry, I missed it.
Well, as uh you know, parent um communication. The one thing that I know that um as what was shown in SAC. Was data from our A P physics showing that our students really didn't have the foundational pieces compared to our other A P science courses. And meeting success and I believe years ago, we did have an accelerated physics course. That kind of got phased away. So there are alternative pathways that you mentioned. So I think maybe that needs to be spelled out a little bit to rising sophomores and juniors. And I ironically got stopped at Costco this weekend and got the same question, so to me, uh obviously.
My goodness.
Communication uh needs to be put out there in the freezer section, I was not prepared. So um so yes, I think, uh thank you for bringing that up and I think yes, more communication is definitely warranted. And we want to make sure students know what their options are um to talk about A P Physics, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Two. Um I hope that answers your question. If not, I encourage you to reach out to Dr. Barnes Johnson um and Dr. Two offline uh to discuss your concerns in more detail.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, anyone else? All right, with that, can I get um and we're moving to S one, consent vote, approved consent agenda items, can I get a motion, please? Mara, second, Brian.
Daphne Kendall.
Yes.
Betsy Bagle.
Yes.
Beth Barron.
Yeah.
Debbie Bronfeld.
Yes.
Jean Durbin.
Yes.
Mara Franceschi.
Yes.
Brian McDonald.
Yes.
Susan Cantor.
Yes.
Bob Christopher.
Yes.
Our consent agenda passes.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden. So Dr. Kelly, so February twenty-seventh at the high school at six o'clock. And is there, is there a Zoom option? Uh someone asked me, I I forgot to ask you. Is there a Zoom?
See if I said the Zoom option, they're gonna like miss all the like in person.
No, no, I know, but.
It's gonna be Facebook Live.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep, no Zoom.
But we're looking forward to seeing everyone in person um on the twenty-seventh at six o'clock, no Zoom, but Facebook Live.
Right, they get to meet board members and.
That's not a selling point, they get to meet you.
I think all the administrators will be there, they can.
Doctor Two, they know, they know to go to Costco if they want to see Doctor Two.
Well, I have lots of student performers, so I think it will be a nice fellowship uh opportunity for the community. If they're able to make it.
Well, we look forward to seeing everyone there. Uh and with that, can I get a motion to adjourn? You guys have to think about it, we could, I could keep talking. No, Jean, second, Beth. And uh everyone in favor?
Unanimous.
Unanimous, good night, everyone, thank you.